Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. Welcome. Thank you for coming. I know the biggest draw was the air conditioning, but we're here. So I'm Pat Markovich. I am representative of the Downtown North Neighborhood Association, and here's my co-conspirator who's going to introduce himself.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Utsav Gupta from the University of South and Professorville Neighborhood Association. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Our first person to speak is Mayor Ed Lowing. He's gonna make some introductions and give us a little spiel.
It wasn't a very long intro.
How long have we been on a commission together? You know me.
About 13 years, something like that. Well, I'm delighted to see this turnout. We're gonna have to do one of these sweeping things to see everybody at the same time. But I'm delighted to see the turnout. Really happy to welcome you to this and welcome you to my hood here in University of South and Professorville. And by that, I don't mean City Hall is my hood. Hood, and I spend most of my time here. I actually live here and have for 32 years in the current location down at around Webster and Barcadaro. And I'm way behind the major president and first lady of our neighborhood is sitting here in front of their 50-year residents in that neighborhood as well, so. Luckily, this place is only five minutes. It's my second home, so I get around to both of my houses really fast. Yeah, I've been a number to a number of these in the last two years. I absolutely love them. I hope this mic is working. It seems like it's cutting it out. Yeah. And I absolutely love them because it lets get directly at senior city leaders and at least two or three council members as you have to. So myself, Pat Burt, I'm just standing here, man. I'm just standing here. It wasn't me. I may have to use the mic. Pat Burt and George Lou are sort of co-hosts with me on the council side. And you're gonna hear from, I'm not gonna announce it now, but you're gonna hear from a lot of the senior leaders on staff that work in this building and elsewhere. But I will introduce Ed Chikata, also known around here as Ed S., as opposed to Ed L. in most of our meetings. And he'll introduce the senior staff as they speak on various of the issues. So right now, you can get in front of them on specific stuff for your specific neighborhood, which was the idea that this is outreach that we do on a rotating basis to get out to all neighborhoods over a period of time, which I think is about two years, Megan. That's the goal, right? So you can focus down on whatever small details are valuable to you in your neighborhoods and applicable to you, or you can also ask general questions as well. And so your neighborhood leaders are actually, you know, the council members are the hosts, but your neighborhood leaders are in charge tonight. They're running the show. And I've worked with both Utsav and Bass on city commissions. They're gonna keep you under control. They're gonna be an organized group. So I hope this is as productive I've been to and that you get some of your questions asked and some of them on the table for follow-up from the city staff after that. So with that, back to the moderators. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Lowing. Okay, we're gonna hit the first bullet point, which is neighborhood street safety and traffic enforcement. And the speaker is going to be Ria Lowe.
And before Ria starts, I just want to say hello to those that are watching on YouTube Live, just as a reminder. We are recording this, so if folks are not able to join us later, they can always check it out online.
Okay, can you hear me? Great. I'm Ria Hutbarat Lowe. I'm the new chief transportation official for the city. I'm really excited to be here. I'm also a local. And I have a few updates in terms of transportation. The city's working on quite a few things in terms of both transportation, parking, traffic, and other related issues. One of the big things that we're working on at the moment is an update to the bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan. So if you're interested in that, there is an item coming up for the next pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee in October, October 7th, and the planning and transportation committee on November 12th. Some of the other kind of large transportation projects that are happening at the moment are grade separation projects. So we have a grade separation community meeting that is coming up on, in Mitchell Park, on the 30th of September. Yeah, September. That's for the Churchill grade separation. Also Palo Alto Avenue. The city has been working on a quiet zone strategy with alphabet of different organizations, agencies. And so that's something that we're working on construction at the moment, and then we'll be able to apply to the Federal Rail Administration in order to get a quiet zone for Palo Alto Avenue. And we're also studying an interim strategy to have a quiet zone at Churchill as well. And then in terms of red curbs, you might have heard of AB 413. That is a recent law that was passed. It means that we can no longer park right next to corners on the approach side. So as you're approaching a corner, then the side that's on your right, you can no longer park in that last 20 feet next, in advance of the stop bar. So we were also, this is applicable regardless of whether there's red curb there. But we will be prioritizing some red curb throughout the city, and we're doing some analysis on which locations to prioritize. Some of the first locations are right downtown on Leighton, and so there's a few other things that we're doing in addition to red curb in those locations. And then we'll be looking at some of the other locations throughout the city. So you'll be seeing a bit more red curb, but it's actually applicable regardless of whether there's red curb. In addition, the other thing is Palo Alto, as you know, is a great place. And as with all great places, we have some parking issues. And so everybody wants to come and work and live and visit this place. So we have like 14 off-street parking lots. We have five off-street parking garages downtown. We're working at the moment on some technology improvements in the garages. We're also working on, we've done some work sort of since COVID to free up some of the on-street spaces by changing the pricing for the permits, adding three-hour limits in the parking garages, and also some opportunity for low-income permits within the garages, and as well as reducing the number of employee permits for on-street. So there's a number of changes that are happening there, but we have some more changes that we would like to make as well, and we plan to bring an item to council later, probably this fiscal year, to discuss some of the options for that as well. And then finally, there's a whole lot of other things going on, and I know that you have some questions as well. I have office hours every Thursday. If you'd like to come for community members, I hold them at 4:00 PM, 4 till 5 at Cooper Cafe on Ramona. And with that, I'll hand it over to the chief.
Thank you, Ria. If the microphone gives me fits, I've got three teenagers at home, so I'm pretty used to raising my voice. I need to. My name is Andrew Bender. I am the police chief. Welcome. It's great to see some familiar faces. So the mayor and I were at a breakfast yesterday at El Prado with some of our businesses, so it's great to see a couple of familiar faces from yesterday. I'm gonna keep my comments very high level. And then my hope is that when it gets to the Q and A time, that the specificity of the question, if it doesn't get answered by what I share here, you're welcome to ask that, and I look forward to hearing from you. I kind of broke, based on some of the feedback that you provided to Megan and that Megan provided to us, I kind of broke what I wanted to talk about tonight into a couple of different sections. I'll start with traffic. Since COVID, we've seen the roads change a lot with driving behaviors. You may have noticed that as well. Speeding, just some all-around really disruptive, pretty crazy driving out there. And so we're aware of that, and I'm gonna talk about how we've been working to curb that. But first of all, if you're in this audience, you wonder, how do I file a traffic complaint? How does the police chief or the police department know that there's a traffic issue or concern in my neighborhood? The first thing I'd like you to do is consider going to paloalto.gov, which is paloaltopd.gov, which is our website. And on that website is a form that you can fill out right there, which will generate a traffic complaint that'll go straight to the police department. It goes to our traffic supervisor. He gets those. He puts those in a log, and then those are worked by both our traffic team and our patrol. And so as I just mentioned, there's really, when those complaints come in, there's two ways that we address those. Thanks to council, a couple of years ago, we brought back our traffic team. So we have one sergeant and two officers that are on the motorcycle that hopefully you've seen out and about town. Those are our dedicated traffic officers, so they're out there the entirety of their shifts doing traffic enforcement and other related traffic topics. The second way that we address your traffic concerns is through our patrol officers. You know, there's still men and women that drive those black and whites that are trained in traffic enforcement that they get in the academy and at the, during their field training. They do have ancillary duties like calls for service, so when someone calls 911, those are our primary responders. But as that downtime allows, they go to that log. They look at the traffic complaints that have come in throughout the entire city, and then on their discretionary time, they'll go out and do that. I know that one of the topics that was brought up specifically for this group in these neighborhoods was Middlefield and Hawthorne. I can tell you that in preparation for this meeting, I had our data analyst pull stats. And from January 1st to July 31st, just your neighborhoods alone, we issued 185 citations. And there were two biggest hotspots that we've issued those citations. One of those hotspots was Middlefield and Hawthorne. So that's just an example of how your feedback, how it's coming to the PD, how it works its way through various channels. And when I talked to our traffic supervisor today, it was actually a patrol officer who spent a considerable amount of time out there in regards to your concerns. The second topic I'd like to talk about is parking. If there's a RPP question or issue, that's actually Ria's Department Transportation. We deal with parking control mostly downtown that would affect y'all. Two things I want to discuss. If you're following the news, you know that on Monday night, there'll be a discussion that will involve RVs. I wanted to briefly talk about abandoned vehicles. That's any vehicle, not just RVs. It's any vehicle that is, has remained on a public street for over 72 hours. Our municipal code requires that that vehicle move one half mile. And so we do, again, you can go to the PD's website. There's a complaint form right online there. You can fill it out. You send that to us. That also, much like your traffic concerns, will come to those and we'll add that to our log of spot checks. The second thing, and if you're a part of downtown business here, we had a complaint a couple of weeks, oh, actually involving like DoorDash and Uber Eats and some of those ride chairs with parking and just some disruptive driving, I'll call it. We actually brought in our parking control officers during the later hours when this was occurring, so we adjusted their schedules. We issued a number of citations, and we felt like that we've gotten a good response in regards to more compliance. So just another way that the police department wants to be responsive to your concerns as they come in, and that's part of that two-way communication. Because I'm the police chief, I do gotta talk about crime. Good news and bad news. I'll start with the good news. I can sit up before you today, and I do at every community meeting, and can tell you that Palo Alto is a very, very safe city. Our rate of violent crime is extremely low even compared to our neighbors. What we do have is what we call property crimes. That's your thefts, your burglaries, your stolen cars, those kinds of things. That's a very common trend, not only in our area, but the Bay Area. And so, again, in part of my preparation for this meeting, I had our statistician kind of look at trends that we may be seeing in the neighborhoods represented tonight. And I want to talk to you about two things. We've noticed that auto burglaries, that someone breaks into your car, we notice those are up. And we also noticed bike thefts are up. So on a very general overall, you can go to the PD's website. We have a number of crime prevention tips that I'd really strongly encourage you to go look at. You know, it really is a cooperation because we always want the community to be our eyes and ears. You know, my hope is that neighbors communicate with each other, neighbors look out for each other. And then when crime or suspicious activity that you think is related to crime comes into our 911 center immediately. And so, you know, when I, just reverting back to the auto burglaries, there's a rule in the Bender family that when we park our car anywhere, there's nothing that's visible. Bags, change in the, you know, the cup holder, anything that would give someone with nefarious intent who's looking to break into your car a reason to do so. And so I would encourage you all to do the same. Store stuff in the trunk, or even don't store anything in your valuables. As far as bike thefts goes, we are noticing, I get a daily log every day, I notice that majority, not a majority, a number of bicycles are stolen that are either unsecured in a garage left out. That doesn't mean that you're responsible for that theft, but again, you know, I would encourage you to take proper precautions to secure your property. But again, plug for our website to go and look at those prevention tips. And then lastly, I want to talk about the public safety building that might be on people's mind here, like, when are you moving in? So I'll tell this crowd, what I've been telling everybody for the last two years, any day now. We will be there. No, just kidding. Where's Brad? Brad? I'm just kidding. We, the fence is down, the boxes are packed, the offices are ready to go. It's a beautiful building. It's been clean. Brad and his team have really, a great job. The fire chief is here, and his deputy chief will all be moving in very, very soon. There'll be an open house. If you're interested in checking it out, I would encourage you to come by and check it out. And with that, I think Ria and I are open for questions, right, Megan?
Yes. So for questions, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand, and I will bring the mic to you. So we're just gonna go from one side of the room to the other to try to provide some equal opportunity.
Hello. Hi, my name is Pearl. I just moved to Waverly and Hamilton. I also work at Alma and Hamilton. I came from Oakland, so this Palo Alto feels very nice. It's very safe. But I do work at a company called Palantir, and we have been getting a lot of protests. And I just wanted to know if the city, you know, I'm also like an immigrant, and we have a diverse group of people working there, and there's a lot of misinformation, but I don't want to get too political. I just wanted to see if, because I feel a little bit nervous becoming a target when I see the flyers in the neighborhood. Like, I was walking home yesterday, and I saw a few flyers on the bus stop saying, you know, kind of equating us to ICE, and so just wanted to get a feel for, and I'm not here in any kind of official capacity. This is more like, I live and work here. I'm part of the community. I'm excited to be here. But it just makes me a little bit nervous. I wanted to know if the city was aware and doing anything. Again, not on any official capacity, just as like a fellow community member. Not sure if that was a clear question, but.
How about I, how about I start out from the police perspective and the public safety perspective? You know, it's a, it's a balance for the police department. You know, I'm not political. I don't take sides. I swore an oath to the Constitution. And so it's a real balance for the police department to ensure that we're protecting people's First Amendment right to freedom of speech. You know, what I shared yesterday, because this question came up at El Prado, is that the exercise of First Amendment rights in Palo Alto is woven in the fabric of this community for decades. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of with the Palo Alto Police Department is the latitude that we give people who want to voice their opinion. I'm proud to say that in 2020 and 2021, there was probably 30-plus rallies, demonstrations. And we didn't have one issue here. A lot of that is, there's multiple reasons for that, but one of which is we have a supervisor who's specifically dedicated to working with all sides of those involved. So if there is a business that we know where there's gonna be a demonstration, that supervisor has reached out to our business contacts. Believe it or not, that supervisor reaches out to the person with the rallies. We get a ton of cooperation. We lay ground rules. We monitor those things. We're very aware of them. We try not to make the police the story out of those. We let people do their thing. We watch it. We have rules of engagement of when we're gonna intervene and when we're not. And so far, that's been a recipe for success for you. But I can tell you, as an employee at Palantir, I understand your concern. Just know that we're out there and we're aware and we're working with both sides. Does that answer your question?
Next question.
You know, it really depends on the circumstances. I can say that, like, with this latest Palantir, we're not, none are wearing masks. And I know what you're referring to. That's. Yeah, how about you and I connect after, at the end of this, and we could talk? Great.
Oh, hello. My name is Carolyn Schwartz. I live at Channing House, around the corner practically, with other people in my row. We would like to, well, for those of you who don't know Channing House, it's a senior community, residential community between Homer and Channing on Webster Street. We have 240 residents and 180 employees. We're one of the largest employees, city, employees of the city. We would like to talk about the parking permits. I don't know who this should be addressed to, but maybe you, Ria. We would like the city council or your department to authorize the parking authority to sell annual permits to Channing House that can be transferred among the employees as needed. Right now, we have to, every time an employee moves out of Channing House for another job, that permit is not transferable, and we have to buy another permit. We have one of the lowest turnovers in the area, and yet we spend a considerable amount of money and time. What we're trying to do is get these cars off the street. And we're working really hard at Channing House to help our employees and our residents keep cars off the street. But it would really help us if you could make some progress in that area. Any questions about this?
No, I'm aware of the issue. So thanks for the comment. I'll look into it.
Thank you.
I'm Patty Irish, also live there. The other question, and you said you have been adjusting some of the permit qualifications. The last time I was aware that the income level that allowed you to get the subsidized parking had not been adjusted with the increase in, you know, the $20, $25 minimum and wage. And so we'd also like for you to raise that minimum wage to the realistic level of a low-income employee. We have a number of those, and they would like that benefit. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look into it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Laurie Sullivan. And we have lived on Webster Street, as Ed mentioned, for over 50 years. And I want to thank the city and the police department for their great service all through the years. There are two things I want to quickly address, and you've covered most of it. But I want to voice our concerns. One is the problem with electric bikes, skateboards, razors, and the like. They are a problem, and I know that you know that, that is. And I would urge the city to help educate the public. And I would urge you to educate the students at the various schools in the city and to educate the residents. It wouldn't hurt to have a flyer with the utility bills that go out, or some other means to let people know what is allowed and not allowed. They are dangerous to pedestrians. I know the other day, right where the mayor and I live near each other, and there were two electric bikes being driven by adults pulling children behind them and did not even hesitate at a stop sign. And that should not be happening. I don't expect people to come to a dead stop. We know that doesn't happen with bicycles. But there's gotta be a pause. People have to educate to look, and this is a safety thing for seniors. The second thing is, I want to commend the police department for putting motorbikes and officers on the street again. Yesterday or the day before, at 7:45 in the morning, for the first time in years, I saw a motorcycle officer issuing a citation to a driver on Middlefield right by the Junior Museum. We have not seen this for years. And I know your focus is a lot on the heavy traffic at streets, and Barcadaro is a major problem because the speed limit, they think, is posted at 35 to 40. We know it's 25, and I urge you to keep those signs up that tell you how fast you're going. I think those are very useful. But I would also urge you to consider directing your officers to look at some of the smaller streets where it's common for people to drive right through the stop signs. These are particularly dangerous in a lot of parts of Professorville because people have large hedges, and pedestrians are entering those crosswalks while drivers are often making a Hollywood stop, they used to call it. In any event, I thank you for all that you're doing. I think we're on the right direction. I urge you to consider the education part. And please, maybe hire a couple more motorcycle officers.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sullivan. Let me, actually, those are really two points I want to make. To your first point, I was just at a county chief's meeting last week, and one of the, one of the cities near us, the chief said, e-bikes have taken over our city. So it's, the challenges that we have here are being shared throughout San Clara County. I can tell you that the overwhelming majority of e-bikes, they're illegal. Our traffic supervisor has given department training on them. We're taking a very hard stance on them because they are dangerous, not only to other bicyclists, vehicles, but pedestrians. And so if you see them out there, I want you to call 911 or non-emergency line and report that because we will respond and we will take action. Yeah. Hang on one second. The second point I want to make is, I would love a bunch of more motorcycles with, for traffic. One of the challenges that Ria and I are working through is speed surveys that limits what my traffic officers are able to do. I'm confident that we're gonna get, the mayor and I have spoken about this. I know that. I hear you. I know that Middlefield and other areas, Alma and Barcadaro, I won't ask you to raise your hand if you've seen egregious speeding on those roads. I hear you. Speeding is probably one of the biggest complaints I get. So we are working on that, and when we get those speed surveys in place, my hope is that we can take some more enforcement action. Here's what I'm gonna warn the crowd, though. I go to these meetings, and everybody's like, traffic enforcement, traffic enforcement. And so I send the motor cops out there, and then two weeks later, I get an email. It's like, you gave me a ticket. I wasn't talking about my driving. I was talking about my neighbor's speeding driving. So just remember, when you ask for traffic enforcement, and you see those motor cops out there, they have, you know, those guys are tough. Ma'am.
Scariest thing for me is walking on the sidewalk and having an electric bike come right up behind me. And, you know, they don't even beep or anything. I need to get out of there, but they should be on the street if they go that fast.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't be riding at all. We share your frustration, and like I said, this is a quasi-new phenomenon that we are cracking down on addressing. I think Ria wants to just add something to what I shared.
Yeah, so there are various types of devices. Some of them are officially e-bikes. There's three classes of e-bikes, but there are some that are not actually classified as e-bikes. They're kind of a hybrid between motorbikes and bikes. And so those are the ones that they're more like an off-road device and they shouldn't be ridden on the street. We're also doing work through our Safe Roots to School program to provide information to encourage, you know, parents not to actually purchase them for their kids. And kids are not the best riders. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is, in terms of the engineering and traffic speed surveys, we're planning on bringing that to council. It's going to come in various phases. So the first group of streets and street segments is coming in the beginning of September, September 8th.
Thank you. We do want to get through the rest of our agenda, but we do have an area on our agenda that's for all other comments. So please, those that we didn't get to yet on this topic, hold your comment. Remember your comment for a little further in our agenda and we'll get to you. I think I'll pass it back to our emcees.
Thank you. So our next section is on downtown business and retail cleanliness and public safety updates with a Q and A session following that. So Kylie Nose, our Assistant City Manager, and Brad Eggleston, our Public Works Director. We'll handle this one. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kylie Nose. I'm the Assistant City Manager, working on economic development for right now. So just a little bit about economic development and business and retail in the downtown core. So economic development really engages a number of stakeholders across the city. So there's no single one person or one department or one office that's working on it. It's really a collaborative effort. So that's why you actually are going to see Brad and I both present on this. And you even heard a little bit from the chiefs. We'll weave him in as well. In CMO, we've got two positions closer to my mouth. Got it. Thank you. I'm usually told I am too loud, so this is new. All right. So the CMO staff, so our economic development team, really focuses on helping businesses open, frankly. And I'm happy to report that we're actually seeing an uptick in permits being pulled by new businesses. And so we're really focusing on what we can do to help facilitate their opening as swiftly as possible. We have to do that amongst many departments, working with utilities, planning, building, fire, to ensure that we can move through the permitting process. We also are working with the business community that's already here. So a few key things that we do. We're meeting with the business community on a monthly basis, actually very similar to this. We pull them in and have conversations over these very similar topics. How's it going? Crime, parking, cleanliness, fats, oils and grease, stormwater, all that kind of stuff. And so we do meet with them on that monthly basis to partner with them. And we'll partner with them on activation activities as well. So just a couple of things coming up in this area. Hopefully you all know this weekend's Art and Wine Festival. Hopefully you can come out and join and participate. And upcoming this October is also Code Art Festival, which is a really cool festival in the downtown area. We do it every other year with lots of installations throughout the downtown core. Some longer-term projects that are underway, we've got the University Avenue Streetscape redesign. So this is looking at what does the university streetscape look like? We've looked at a couple of different models and we're looking at how we can manage the cost of the investment. And so what is the true scope of that? As you can see, Ramona is in a closed status, so we're working on what are the permanent changes and installations for that with the retailers and restaurants there. And Public Works is also working on design of a new garage. So I'll turn over to Brad to go over some of the more details, cleanliness and the like. And I think Chief went over a lot of the safety issues and so he'll be available as part of the Q and A session.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Eggleston. I'm the Director of Public Works. I get the exciting topic of downtown cleanliness to talk about, at least briefly. But in all seriousness, I know that is important to all of you, to visitors to the downtown, especially to businesses there. And Public Works is really in charge of really all the efforts in downtown cleanliness. There's been some concerns raised really over the last couple of years, and so I want to share some of the improvements. As kind of a baseline of what we've done, it's really the activities that are street sweeping, pressure washing of the downtown sidewalks. We hire and oversee the downtown streets team who's out picking up litter. And then we have staff that are doing things like emptying and cleaning garbage cans, cleaning news racks, and, you know, peeling stickers and responding to complaints and removing graffiti, all that kind of thing that goes on. So that's really kind of a baseline, a level of effort that's been going on for many years. Similar functions as well happen in the downtown parking garage, garages for most of those activities. And like I mentioned, we had been hearing complaints from residents and from businesses in regular meetings about the conditions. And so a couple of key things we've done that I think have made a difference. The monthly pressure washing of sidewalks doesn't sound like a big deal, but when you've got coffee shops and ice cream shops and whatever else spilling on the sidewalks in the core area of downtown, we doubled that and made it twice a month, and that's made a difference. The other thing is, we've added about 65 hours a week of staff time, which is really proactive work. It's staff walking the downtown, picking up litter, observing problems and just taking care of them on the spot. So those are the changes we made last year. We were very pleased that the city council approved funding in this year's budget to continue those essentially ongoing. And in the regular meetings with businesses we've had, we've been hearing positive things and the sense that that's making a difference, which is great. I hope that all of you who visit downtown feel the same. That would be good to know. So in terms of those cleanliness aspects, I guess the other thing I wanted to add is you can always reach us with a concern. The best way is Palo Alto 311. For those of you who use the app on your phone, that's one way. You can also access it through our website. So that's really what I wanted to cover on cleanliness. While I've got the floor, just a couple of other quick things. Anyone who uses the Palo Alto University Avenue Caltrain Station and uses those undercrossing walkways and ramps is probably not thrilled with the condition. Wanted to let you know, city council approved a contract. We're investing about $300,000 to completely repaint all those tunnels and ramps as well as taking out all that probably 50-year-old or so lighting systems, installing new conduit wiring and lighting. I think that's really going to be both a significant safety and aesthetic improvement, probably complete in the next two to three months. And then I'll mention, Ria kind of stole my thunder a bit when she talked about the parking guidance systems in the garages. But that's so important, I'm going to mention it again. That's one of the 10 city council 2014 infrastructure plan kind of key projects by the city that were funded by new funding sources, including the public safety building that Chief mentioned. So on top of what she just said, I'll just mention, in the next month, the red light, green light system that indicates parking availability in those garages will be functioning in all four of the garages. And by December, we expect to have the signage in place at the garage entrances that tells you the availability of parking on each floor. So that's my update, and I think I'm passing it back to Chief again, or are we going to Q and A?
Okay.
Okay, I'm back. If you have a question, raise your hand and I'll get to you.
This is probably in the category of a silly idea, but putting it there. There are a lot of empty buildings, the big buildings particularly on down on Hamilton and so on. I keep wondering if in the interim, before they get rented out, there would be something that could happen in those buildings would be advantageous to the owners and could support activities in the community in terms of people getting together and meeting or pop-ups or something like that, that would make that be something rather than a dead space.
Sure. So we did look at doing pop-ups a bit ago. And I think that's still generally a temporary use that could be done. However, we are focusing, in all honesty, on helping the more ongoing permanent businesses opening, given the volume that's coming through and our desire to really reinvigorate it on an ongoing basis, given that we have that interest now.
Are there questions? I don't see any. Any other, any other hands on this topic? No?
Okay. Are you kidding? I don't have AC in my house. I'm staying here. The next one is the Downtown Housing Plan Status Update and Support for the Unhoused with the Q and A session with Jonathan Late, Planning and Development Services Director, and Chantal Gaines, Deputy City Manager.
You look comfortable. Good evening. I am Jonathan Late. I'm the Director for Planning and Development Services. I'm going to speak about the downtown housing plan, but also happy to answer any questions you may have about housing development that's taking place generally in the downtown area or citywide. The downtown housing plan is flows from the city council adopted housing element. And it is intended to identify opportunities for accelerating and finding opportunities to create more housing in the downtown area. Our housing element didn't identify, it identified about 30 units or 30 properties for future housing development. But we recognize that it's challenging and it's going to take some time to study how we can actually create an opportunity for more housing in this area. As you may know, there's a lot of competing interests and limitations on what we can actually do to encourage and foster additional housing. The lots downtown are small in area and lot width and lot depth. We have a number of buildings that are consolidated into a larger development today and are unlikely to be redeveloped. We have a number of historic properties downtown. We have long-term property owners who aren't necessarily interested or willing to enter into the risky aspect of development without sufficient incentives to build. And of course, parking, as we've heard earlier today, is, of course, a concern for everybody citywide, but also we understand acutely for the downtown area. It doesn't help that the state has recently made some changes to its regulatory landscape, which exempts parking for developments within a half a mile radius of the Caltrain station. So people who are interested in building in the downtown actually don't have to provide parking for that development. On the flip side of that, though, what we understand and have learned is, is most developers actually do want to provide parking. So we're not expecting to see development take place without any parking. There, it may not be as much as individuals desire or want, but there will at least, we anticipate some parking available. So with this, some of these constraints, and I believe we've released a report, an existing conditions report that lays the context and sort of the background for what we're doing and why, and those challenges that I briefly mentioned, and some of the opportunities that we have. But to encourage some of those, for those who are interested in seeing housing, and the council has expressed this through the goals of the downtown housing plan, we are going to have to expect that there's going to be larger, greater opportunities to develop in the downtown areas if we want to see housing in these areas. So that's going to be greater height than what we're familiar with today. That's going to be more floor area than we have. And other incentives that are going to encourage folks to consolidate lots and also think about how they might take their property where they're generating income and possibly office-related income, which is the highest and best use downtown, to either convert that or apply that someplace else so that they can build housing on a particular site. So these are some ideas that we're thinking about now. And we hope to return to the city council in fall with a menu of options that we would hope to get direction on which levers to explore further and which ones to adjust to support this goal. Out front, we have these flyers. If you haven't seen them, please take an opportunity. We'd love to hear from you if we haven't already. If we have, we'd love to hear from you again. There's a link where you can get on our website and we can email you information, updates as we move forward through this process. So I'll pause there and invite Chantal Cotton-Gaines to talk about support for the unhoused.
Thank you. I have a lot of things. No, I'm good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As John said, my name is Chantal Cotton-Gaines. I'm the Deputy City Manager here at the City of Palo Alto. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'm just going to take a couple of moments and talk about some services that we have available related to our unhoused neighbors. And really, I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of other staff members that are doing the hard work, such as Ms. Melissa McDonough, who's here with me today, and also Minka Van Der Swag in our Community Services Department. So I'm just going to hit on a few points. First, pointing out that we have outreach services available here at the city. So if there are individuals who are experiencing homelessness, unlike the chief, I'm not loud. So let me know if this mic goes out. I'm not a loud person at all. So we have outreach workers that are available and going around the entire city as a touchpoint of support for individuals. Typically, it takes a few interactions before individuals will actually want to take you up on the services that we're offering. So those outreach worker interactions are very critical. And we often recommend that folks can let us know if they want to have an outreach worker reaching out to an individual if there's an area in which you know that there are typically folks that may need extra help. We also have outreach tables available weekly on Tuesdays in Litton Plaza from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as well as on Wednesdays at All Saints Episcopal Church, right up the street here on Hamilton, or Waverly, technically the address I think is Waverly, from 10:00 to 2:00 as well. And there's also a food closet there at that same church. In town, we have a few shelter options. Some of them are rotating shelters. And we have a resource card here today, which I can share with you. That's something that you can feel free to share with anyone that you think may need those resources. We have an overnight warming location, also known as the Owl, which is held in our downtown library just across the street when the county declares inclement weather, when those particularly cold evenings where it drops below freezing typically in the evenings. So that is available at certain times of the year. We can take up to 10 people there. We have safe parking locations at congregations in our community. Some congregations that have received a permit to do so, as well as we have a safe parking site located on Gang Road out near the Baylands. This is particularly for people who are living in their vehicles. That is a location where there are some additional services available to them. Here at City Hall, and we're also building a shelter. It is in process. It is going to open in 2026. Come hell or high water, we will make it open at that time. Also, we have dignity on wheels, which comes here right outside of City Hall. Is it once or twice a month, Melissa? Okay, we did have dignity on wheels that came here. And they also are available in other parts of the community as a place where folks can do laundry and showering. So there are also opportunities for that at the Opportunity Center, which is located over near Pam. A few other things is, we have a host of services available through nonprofit partners here at the city. So those are some of the additional outreach workers. Those are the people offering school supplies for students. Those are the folks that are doing actual going and interacting with the families that may need assistance in our community. So definitely giving honor to all of the nonprofits that are doing the work daily. And I referenced the resource card, so I have them with me here today. Oh, lastly, I will note that sometimes you may see someone exhibiting challenging behavior in the community. If there is a concern in any kind of way, we encourage you to use the non-emergency line or call 911 or 988 if you think it's a mental health concern. Particularly, it's not a guarantee that that individual is unhoused, that is having those moments of crisis. But most importantly, those are resources that you can tap into if you are concerned when you're walking around in our community and you may see. and you may see someone that may need help. So with that, I will open it for questions, mostly for John, but also if you have any for me. Thank you. I see a hand over here.
So my question is regarding the downtown housing project. I was there at their last meeting, and I asked them the same question, and I didn't get a straight answer. The question is, for who is, are the units for? I mean, there's three different types of housing units: low income, middle income, and high income. And what I told them was that no investor was going to invest unless they get a return on their investment. And in Palo Alto downtown, it's going to be high income.
Yes, it's amongst the highest property values in the city is downtown. And that's an advantage, I guess, in some areas because the more development opportunities we create for a developer, the more opportunities there might be for us to create inclusionary units for some of that development. We've actually had done a previous report a number of years ago that showed that downtown could actually accommodate more inclusionary units than other parts of the city because of the higher property values. I'm sorry, inclusionary, sorry, I'm, this is what. So forgive me, I'm a planner, and planners like to talk jargon. So at any time, raise your hand and say, you know, speak English. Inclusionary housing is units that are deed restricted for lower incomes or even moderate incomes, and it's incorporated into a market rate development, or it could be a standalone 100% affordable housing development as well. And so when we see market rate development take place, the city actually has an inclusionary requirement, but it only applies to ownership units, condominiums. For apartments, we accept or allow an in-lu fee instead of putting the units in as a part of the development. And that's because market, that's because rental units don't actually generate the same level of revenue for a developer as a, as a quick sell, you know, ownership unit for the apartment. It's got to go for thirty years before they recapture their investment. So, so you're right, we are probably looking at a lot of market rate development downtown, but we also know that we need to get affordable units as well. So one of the strategies that we're looking at is how do we create enough incentive to provide the inclusionary units? And do we want to create other opportunities where we still would collect the in-lu fee and think about opportunities in the downtown area where we can support a 100% affordable housing project? So recognizing the need is across all income levels. That's what we're looking to do with the plan.
On the question of affordable housing projects downtown, the city council has committed to utilizing certain of the surface parking lots as sites for 100% affordable housing. And we have one that is, is it Lot T? That is the furthest along moving ahead, and then Lot L, which is, is that across from the post office? Or whatever? And the intention is that we will replace the surface parking, but we'll build affordable housing above, like six stories, I think it is on this. So we're moving forward on those. And I will say that even though this is very high land value, the economics of building housing today is real difficult even for the market rate housing. And we are actually seeing throughout our area and elsewhere that affordable housing projects are still eligible for very significant tax incentives and financing incentives. And so they're, in some cases, more able to be funded than the market rate. The problem that we have is that middle-income housing that doesn't qualify for all of those affordable housing subsidies and isn't economical enough to build by the private sector. But we are moving forward real aggressively on that. And then I did want to add, Chantel mentioned that we have a new transitional housing project. You may have read about it, the end of San Antonio Road. Eighty-something units with what are called full wraparound services for people who are transitioning from being unhoused to have social services, medical services, even food services, to move them into permanent affordable housing. And, and that's a really important project, over thirty million dollars, combination of our dollars, philanthropy dollars from Sobrato, philanthropies, county dollars, and most of all, state dollars. So that should be up and running early next year.
Ed, did you have another comment?
Nope, Councilmember Burt covered it.
So a question, you know, that housing that you're talking about, Pat Burt, is I believe it's a six-month that, you know, that they can stay there. I wondered if you could give us an update on that Alta Housing on Kipling? Because really, it hasn't moved. I mean, I gather there's a suit or something. And so the urgency of getting that kind of housing actually underway is a concern for me. I have another question. Is there a priority or a requirement to that people that qualify for those, that special below-market-rate housing? Do they have to be, or can they be residents and workers in the city? Do they get the first priority for the occupancy of any of those subsidized housing? I hope they do.
Right, so on the second question, I know we've had some projects in the city where we had a local preference requirement. And I think, I don't know if there's been changes in state law, or I'm remembering something that makes me want to not answer that in the affirmative so strongly.
There are some limitations on the city's ability to establish a local preference. So that is a work in progress, but nonetheless, certainly on our radar screen. And that's it. So you're going to speak to the Alta Housing Project. Perhaps you can also speak to Charities Housing Project, as well as the city's property we're securing from Sobrato.
Okay, so Lot T at the corner of Litton and Kipling, we, is a project that is part of the housing element and part of a plan to redevelop the surface parking lots in the downtown. This is our first one. We're going to see how this goes, and then we're going to decide, council will decide on how we want to proceed with the rest of the, of the lots, acknowledging, of course, that there is this, this litigation issue out there. But we're still moving forward, and the city council has entered into a negotiated lease or a
Exclusive negotiation agreement with Alta Housing. I'm here to
Yeah, this is good.
Buck them up when necessary. Also to answer the really hard questions, so you can save those for a minute.
We got to develop the comedy routine, though, so we can. This is kind of dry. But we are working hard on that project, and we are expecting to return to the city council in fall, I want to say like October, with a refined concept design based on the city council's prior comments, and a proposal on how we could streamline that project through a expedited process, possibly going to the Architecture Review Board as soon as early next year, and with a council decision shortly thereafter. So the first quarter of next year, which is lightning speed in my world. So the design now is looking at about five stories and about fifty-four units. There were different design options, and the direction that we received at the time was, was this approach. And partly because there are other housing projects in the queue, and one that was mentioned was 3001 El Camino Real. This is the Charities Housing Development. The exact number of units is escaping me. Yeah, I was going to say about 125, but 130 sounds better. Let's go with that. And this is another project that has received a variety of funding sources. It actually has recently secured all of the funding sources, including five million from the city. They are in the planner view process, and we expect to issue a building permit before the end of this year. So that will be under construction. And then the other project is a part of a negotiated agreement with the Sobrato organization. There is, I want to say, I don't know if it's three or three and a half acres of land that was negotiated as a part of that development, which basically is allowing the existing uses to continue. And at the Fries site, yes, I'm sorry, if you're not familiar with it, planner, you got to remind me. You know, I look at the city in a very different way. So at the former Fries site, to allow those existing uses to stay there and build a townhome development on that property as well, which we are having some conversations about that now. The Sobrato organization has dedicated to the city acreage of land for a park and one acre of land for a future affordable housing development. That is something that we're also working on now to develop some schematic ideas for the city council to consider. That, too, will be coming to the council very shortly with some ideas of what that could look like in the, in the future. So stay tuned on that.
And I would just add, on the first project mentioned, the Alta Housing project, we did have some recent press account that in the court proceeding, ongoing, recognizing that we do have a challenge. The, the press account made it sound like a setback for the, for the development. And talking with our attorneys today, they're actually saying, no, actually what the judge ordered was an expedited hearing. So it actually is allowing it to move faster to resolution, which is a good thing for us.
So, and for those who don't understand it, the, a number of the downtown property owners who had decades ago paid into the property assessment or parking assessment district have challenged whether we as a city have the right to use those lots to build affordable housing and replace the surface parking, or whether they have a say-so in how those lots can be used. That's the basis of the dispute. I did want to just mention on a couple of these other projects, what's called the Charities Housing Project on El Camino is for extremely low and very low income category of income. The extremely low income is basically for the lowest income level, including people who are transitioning from unhoused, like at our transitional housing location. So there's a real synergy between that. And then you may know that we have, so we have the under-construction and nearing completion right now is the transitional housing for basically unhoused people. We have the teacher housing off Cal Ave that is nearing completion. I don't know if you've been down there. It's, it's looking really close. And then we have Mitchell Park Place on Charleston that is for adults, emphasis on adults with disabilities. And so we have three projects under construction and three to four more right in the pipeline. This is the biggest pipeline of affordable housing projects that the city has had in decades. And in part, the business tax that our voters approved two and a half years ago increased by two and a half million dollars a year, our funding for affordable housing. It's a fraction of the cost, but we leverage those dollars. And so that was really valuable. Thank you, voters.
We have a couple more minutes on this topic. Are there other questions?
I'm not going to refer to the housing at the library during inclement weather, but the rest of the time, would there be some way that the few, there are not that many those individuals who are unhoused, they could get some help? And so they don't need to be at the public library, which it doesn't seem to be a very appropriate place for them. And so I would hope that you could give them some help and find a place for them.
Yes, I think that's the short answer, is we definitely want to help those that need the help with our library space during the day that is somewhere where folks may choose to go, similar to any of the rest of us wanting to go into the library, maybe for resources, maybe as a cool place. May, cool literally in temperature, or cool as in very interesting. And so it is something where we know that our outreach workers do try to go through there and interact with people, as I referenced before. It's building trust. And so if you could imagine any of us, if we're in a situation that's not so great, you will want to correspond with someone that you kind of feel at least has your best interest at heart. And that is a lot of the work that our outreach workers are doing from the nonprofits, as well as the ones that are partially funded by the city. And it's a lot of work, as you could imagine, but we're hopeful that little by little, someone may not be interested today, but maybe a couple of touchpoints later, they say, well, yes, maybe I'll stop by the Opportunity Center, or maybe I'll take up this other service you're offering. And so it's definitely a community-wide, I think, thing for all of us to really think about how we can continue to support folks that may or may not be in a place to receive it today, but just continuing to encourage them.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question about the state's housing authority, or whatever you call it. It seems to me that it's focused on studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. There's no mention of co-living. And co-living is really, could be, I think, an economic model for having employee housing, not only for the city or for the businesses or whatever. I mean, right now, in Palo Alto, you can get seventeen hundred dollars per bedroom. And so if a project is focused on that, and let's say five suites or five rooms in a suite with a common kitchen and bathrooms in every room, you're talking some pretty good dollars. And in the same square footage, that's probably a one-bedroom. So you'd be gaining more leverage in doing that. Now, the problem is, is that the state doesn't recognize it. So now you're up against 2031, and, and you need to have some sort of advocacy to promote maybe co-living, or at least look at it, to see if you can introduce it to the city, maybe through our legislatures. And, and that way, if it could be included, I think you would give developers a huge boost in incentives.
Yeah, absolutely. Love those thoughts and couldn't agree more. I think the, the way that the Rena, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process is set up, this is a state, this is where the state tells us how many units we need to plan for over a certain period of time, doesn't really allow for those types of considerations. And when a city's trying to meet a certain target, the focus shifts a little bit away from how do we solve the problem toward, how do we, you know, answer the question, check the box on the, on the, you know, meeting the number? However, I will say, as part of our housing element that the council adopted, we do have a program that we are starting this year to look at innovative housing strategies. And this is the type of thing that would be included in that analysis. And we will come back to the city council with some suggestions on how we could incorporate something like that in our housing element, excuse me, in our zoning code. But you're right, we also need to take that approach with HCD, the Housing and Community Development, the State Department, to see if we can get credit for some of those. And, and I think that's possible, to certainly have the conversation, and I think there could be a receptiveness to that.
And if I could just add a couple of notes. One is that step recently taken, and first off, just to set a baseline, as was pointed out, the state regional housing targets are all based on units, dwelling units, not with respect to the size of the units. And as a result, there's this incentive to create small units. The city council recently modified our impact fees to go from a per-unit basis to a per-square-foot basis, which equalizes and sort of reduces some of that incentive to create a greater incentive for larger units. So not directly on point, but I think also reflecting the need to kind of work within the system we have, but to even the playing field, so to speak, to create more livability with the units. The other is just to The other is just to acknowledge the role that ADUs are starting to take here in Palo Alto as well as everywhere in terms of housing production. It it really is a growth area in terms of where development is happening, whether it's standalone ADUs or accessory dwelling units. I'm sorry for those not familiar with that planner speak uh in terms of, you know, used to call it granny units. Yes, exactly. But now, these days, they come in all shapes and sizes, attached to the primary home, detached uh from the home. And again, based on the state, changes in state laws, there are great incentives for construction of these accessory dwelling units, which in some ways create that forum for the co-living you're describing.
Yeah, and just a footnote to that, I think even Palo Alto want to step further several times throughout this process to provide greater incentives for ADU production and still still does uh compared to the state. And in our housing element, we projected five hundred and twelve housing units to be built over this uh housing cycle. And we're three years into it and we've already met that number. So um, I'm sorry. So we're on average about sixty per year. I think actually it's probably more than that on the um. I'm thinking back to twenty fifteen because I just read a report on this. Oh, yeah, it's it over the last three years, it's been over a hundred. Going back to twenty fifteen when we really started, you know, thinking about this. Um, but yeah, you're right. So we're we're processing a lot of uh accessory dwelling units and um junior accessory dwelling units in the city. And so just another.
I think we have time for one more.
Sorry, I was late. So I don't know if this if this conversation is only about low income housing or housing in general in Palo Alto. Okay, so if it's about general, I have a question. Uh, so I advise startups and um in San Francisco now, San Francisco is taking the lead on AI startups. And as a result, the mayor also up there is doing a lot to clean up the city in terms of homelessness and issues that have plagued Market Street and whatnot. Stanford is such a big uh source point for all these young students creating all these AI things. I don't see any hacker houses here in Palo Alto where there are a lot of such places in San Francisco where fifteen, twenty students live together, they build startups together, they get supported by the community. And then they also then give back to the community by solving problems that can address the community needs as well. And I wonder, is the reason why there are no hacker houses here in Palo Alto, which is supposed to be the hub of innovation and have a venture capital. But there are a lot of them up in San Francisco. So every time I meet a nine, eight, sixteen to a twenty-seven year old, which is all the folks that are coding nowadays, they all want to move to SF. None of them want to move down here because they don't think there's an ecosystem here. But I think they bring a lot of um tax revenue and a lot of economic development because these companies are scaling like very, very fast. And just to give you a reference point, last week, two weeks ago, I interviewed uh one of the founders. He did thirty-six million dollars of revenue in forty-five days. The companies are scaling so fast. And I feel like why is it there's no ecosystem here, hub here for the young um generation to like build these companies? And also connect with the experienced generation here who know what the problems are to solve in in this in in society.
No, I think it's a it's a fair question, and I think it's something that we can continue to look at in that um as part of that innovative housing strategies that I had mentioned a moment ago. Um, I think there's been a couple of attempts at something like that in the city. Um, and uh, you know, nothing on a scale that is probably what you're experiencing in San Francisco. But I I do think there's been, uh, you you have to have a willing property owner and um uh, and it has to be, you know, in the context of at least the zoning code that we have today um, as modified by the state, which there's a lot of modifications there. Um, but yeah, so I mean, I I think we could look at that. There could be some things to incentivize that type of development if that's the type of direction that uh the city wanted to go and and encourage. But you're right, we don't have that set up right now.
So I I do want to kind of help us move on a little bit. We can definitely take up this topic later in our agenda and or afterwards. Um, so I want to give it back to our moderator.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. A great discussion. Um, thank you again. Um, and so we'll move on to our fourth, last but not least, topic for tonight. Um, this is our recent and planned capital street enhancements and park investments, trees maintenance for utilities clearance. And so our Q and A session will begin with, again, uh, Brad Eggleson, our Public Works Director. Thank you.
Thank you. It's off Brad Eggleston again. So I've got this slightly disjointed section where I'm going to give some updates on uh capital improvements that have ever happened or or coming up in these neighborhoods. And then we've we have heard that there were some neighborhood concerns about our city's tree trimming programs and particularly the utilities line clearance. So I'll give a very high level overview of that. And we have our uh city's urban forester here with us uh today as well, who can help answer questions there. So in terms of the capital improvements, just to touch on a couple of things recently completed and in progress. Uh, hopefully, a lot of you are aware of the Fred Irelly Tower Well Park. That's a small park on Alma Street that is newly dedicated parkland. And there was a restoration of the site and a very nice ribbon cutting ceremony uh held just in June. And then as well, uh, Paritage Park, a fairly small project, but some improvements there. Uh, replacing asphalt pathways in the park. That's about fifty percent complete right now. That works still ongoing. And then this also includes replacing uh park benches, mulch, I think some other amenities and a new park sign. Uh, so that's just some other work that's kind of in the works. Uh, you know, one of our uh annual endeavors that really in ends up impacting most neighborhoods is the annual street resurfacing project. That's happening this fall. Uh, actually, I was surprised to see that more than half of our effort for this um year's project is in these neighborhoods. So just to let you know about those, where those are. It's um Addison for uh eight blocks of Addison from Alma Street to Middlefield Road. Uh, a couple one block segments, Downing Lane from Forest to Homer. Uh, we've got Ramona from uh Forest to Hamilton. And then a couple of blocks of University Avenue, uh, two blocks from Webster Street to Middlefield Road. So that'll that'll be some improvements to your uh street network. Of course, some impacts as that work is will be happening, but that'll be in the fall. And then I think uh Ria had also mentioned the quiet zone for the Palo Alto Avenue Caltrain Crossing. That same uh street resurfacing contract happening this fall is uh making the infrastructure improvements that are needed for the the rail crossing. Uh, things like uh changes to the concrete median, some paving, new signage and striping that I think's needed to submit the applications that Ria was referencing. And then uh last one I had in this area, uh, there's kind of a more significant upcoming park renovation project for Johnson Park. Now, at as currently uh budgeted in the capital improvement program, this one's actually slated to have design start uh next fiscal year, which would be starting July of twenty twenty-six. So it's designed that year and then should be construction the next year. Uh, that'll be resurfacing of the con- the uh asphalt and brick pathways, new site furnishings, uh new playground, improvements to irrigation and lighting, uh kind of the the typical type of full-scale uh park renovation project that we do in the city. So as I said, that's kicking off in a year. Um, for those of you especially who live anywhere near that park, uh, look for notifications about a community meeting because through the design process, we do try to have that engagement and share what the plans are and uh get input from community members. Uh, so that was my kind of overview on uh relevant capital improvement programs. Just now going to the uh tree trimming uh programs. Just wanted to explain briefly that the city really has three resources that we use for uh tree trimming and tree maintenance. There's our own internal uh city crews in in public works that work uh in the urban forestry group. They're involved in uh planting new trees, uh removal of public trees. Uh, they do some tree maintenance, more so in the non-routine or uh more technical uh needs where we really need their expertise. And then, of course, uh emergency response as as that's needed. Uh, then probably what what you may see most frequently is our regular public and street tree maintenance contractor. That's West Coast Arborist. They're the ones that come through and uh generally we're trying to keep to a seven-year maintenance cycle. And they're doing uh trimming of of all the city's street trees and uh maintenance of trees in parks. Uh, they also do stump grinding for trees that have been removed and and sometimes we have them do some tree removals as needed. And then I think kind of the topic that more people might be interested in, that's the line clearing uh tree trimming contractor, which is currently uh community tree service. And so by line clearance, what we're really saying, they're the ones that are trimming trees to keep a a safe separation from electrical wires and conductors. And so you can imagine that um that activity can result in trees that are not as looking as aesthetic as we would like them, uh depending on where the trees might be and where the power lines might be. So I mean, what is important to note there, uh, these are not the city's standards. In all of these activities, uh actually, the uh services are following professional best practices and published standards. Uh, for this utilities line clearance in particular, uh, these are mandated standards for a separation from trees that are published by the California Public Utilities Commission and that we essentially have to comply with. And then I guess that the last thing I would mention on that, I mentioned the seven-year uh cycle for regular street tree maintenance for the utility line clearance uh program. Uh, those are on what we try to maintain is a two-year cycle. Because you can imagine that if you had to trim the uh tree so that it wouldn't uh get in proximity to the utility lines for seven years, you would have to have a a much more impactful uh cutting back of the uh trees themselves. So that is on a two-year cycle. So that's my quick overview, and I think I will invite Urban Forester, Peter Gallinger. Where are you, Peter? There he is. You want to come over here with me and uh we can, uh, between the two of us, take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
So we've seen Santa Rosa burned to the ground and we've seen Pacific Palisades burned to the ground. What's the risk and what are you doing to protect us from some kind of a fire coming down from Black Mountain and coming into all these green trees in our city?
So one of the things that um the utilities department has prioritized is undergrounding of the lines up in the high fire risk or um elevated high risk uh areas, which would be up in the foothills areas. And so now that the majority of those lines have been undergrounded, that definitely lessens the threat of that happening from our power lines. Um, generally, the clearance we have in the urban area um is dictated, like we said, by the um Public Utilities Commission. And it's it's rated based on the voltage. So what we're doing is we're making sure that the clearance matches the voltage.
And
Our fire chief is also here.
Fire Chief Leo, Geo Blackshire. Yeah, there there are a number of other efforts that go beyond the the tree trimming programs.
So what is your question? I want to make sure I heard it right. So I know he am.
We have a bunch of green trees. Santa Rosa burned to the ground, Pacific Palisade burned to the ground. What's going to happen if a fire gets near our trees?
So um, one of the things that we do every year is we do wildland urban interface inspections. So our engine companies go up into, our engine companies go up into the foothills and go to all the homes, do inspections. One of the things they look for is limbing of the trees. So it's not necessarily that you have to remove the trees, but you remove the limbs up to a point where if a fire starts, it won't be able to spread into the treetops or and become a crown fire. That's the most dangerous and that spreads the fastest. And so one of the things we uh write up as violations is the limbing of the trees. The other thing that we do is um annually, we do roadside clearance work up on Page Mill, Aracidero and Los Trancos, which is our um evacuation routes. So every year we do mowing and then every three years, the plan is to do limbing and brush work. And so those are some of the things that we do to try to help prevent, in the event of a fire, the spreading of that fire. So the other things that happen if if people are not complying is we are um part of the county weed abatement program. So if people do not come into compliance, then we refer them to the county and the county will come in and do the work for them. And then they will be charged for that work. So those are just some of the things that we do.
Good. So I'd like to add to that. So that's some of the the tangible um prevention preventative measures that we take. Um, oh, by the way, Geo Blackshire, I'm your fire chief.
And I'm the fire marshal, Tammy. Yes, I'm sorry about that.
So um, so you're exactly right. Santa Rosa burned to the ground, Palisades burned to the ground. And um, and something interesting about, and I'll try not to take too much time because I know we're limited, but something interesting about Palisades is that though the weather conditions were predicted. And what the fire chief did at that time, which was, I believe it was never done before, is that the morning that of that fire, the fire chief held back all the firefighters that were going to get off duty. So the whole LA County Fire, they said, no one's going home. We need to staff every rig we have available. And it still burned to the ground. Point being is that we can take the preventative measures as many as we can take. We could limb. We can remove hazardous fuel, et cetera, et cetera. But what's most important is what Chief Duker commonly talks about is preparedness. We need our community to be educated, to be prepared, to not wait till the fire burns, to be educated on how to be safe, how to evacuate, uh, how to be communicative with your neighbors, how to create that safe network among your community. That's really paramount over the measures that we take with the, you know, we have limited resources. Every city has limited resources and but we take efforts to be preventative. But we really, really count on the community to be educated, to be prepared, to ask questions like you're doing. Um, when if you don't, if you say, what's the best action to take if there's a fire? How long do I take? Do I wait till the evacuation? Because a lot of times, if you're going to wait till they say evacuate, you waited too long. If something's burning, you should already have in a mind, if there's, if I'm curious about what the fire is going to do, who can I, where can I go? Do I go to a neighbor's house that's farther away from the hazard? Do I, you know, you have to figure that stuff out before because adding the whole measure of trying to evacuate people really holds us back from being more aggressive on doing that duty. So um that's what I really, is the community's role in this and and um being successful in in these type of situations.
There you go.
Um, moving away from danger, um, I think that the trees in Palo Alto are one of the components of the city that make it a really nice and lovely place to um live and to work. And I really appreciate the trees. I live in downtown north and in twenty twenty-three, there was a set of terrible storms and there was a lot of tree loss. And the city came through afterwards and took out trees that had fallen over and then took out some dying and dead trees. But now you're replanting the trees. And I really wanted to um thank the city for the work in taking down the overhanging branches that are a potential threat as well as putting back the trees that were taken. So I I glad of the opportunity to be able to say thank you.
Thank you. We've we've actually doubled the number of trees we planted this last year over the previous several years, uh, trying to get caught up with the backlog.
Uh, just real quick, the trade-off between having trees, the love of trees, but don't cut those trees down. And yet then you wind up and you have a fire. And why didn't we cut our our trees out? And I think there's at least in my family, concern about we aren't, we're letting our love of trees mute our thinking about how to protect ourselves from a fire like that, which I think is part of what was being asked before. a fire like that, which I think is part of what was being asked before. So how to how does, I think there's a conversation that needs to be held in the whole community around, you've seen these dangers. What are we doing? What can you do? And it addresses the density of the trees as well. Do we have to give up on some of the things as the climate warms, as you have trees that are weren't dangerous and are now, things like that. And it might be worthwhile having a conversation this community-wide. I think there would be considerable interest.
Has there been any discussion about defensible space outside of the wildland urban interface? Or is that, you know, in the fire community, has there been discussions about that? Because I'm not aware. As far as defensible space around your your home, that's generally in the wildland urban interface. I haven't heard of any standards for urban landscapes in those regards. That's definitely something we can look into.
I don't see any other hands. So we're going to move forward to the community feedback portion. If you have any comments or questions for any of the lovely Palo Alto employees here, let's get it rolling.
I have a question or a comment regarding street safety. We started the meeting, and my comments, I think, are for Ria, if she's still here. There you are. Hi. My name is Rob Steinberg. I'm an architect. I've lived on the Bryant Street Bicycle Boulevard for 45 years. And I'm here tonight representing at least 38 properties along Bryant Street and Lincoln that are really concerned about the conflict and safety between the automobiles, the bicyclists, and the children trying to get to school. We submitted a petition asking for traffic calming months and months ago, asking the city to look at the conditions of the Boulevard, the Bike Boulevard between Embarcadero and Forest. And I'm pleased, we've been working with your staff, that they have prioritized that quite high up on the priority list now. We're very appreciative of that. And the council seemed to be supporting that as well. I wanted to make sure that that was on your radar, and that you would continue the efforts and work with our 30, 40 people, families, to make sure that something happens regarding the safety of the conflict between automobiles and bikes soon. Not not three years, not five years. We've studied this for years and years and years, and it's time to take some action soon. And I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
So same, we live a couple blocks from Rob on Emerson between Lincoln and Embarcadero. And I just pulled up on the website, there's been a plan since 2015 that I believe Pat Burt was involved in when he was on council. The Embarcadero Road Improvement Alma to Emerson. I worked at Paly for many years and did that walk and actually witnessed an accident, had to call 911 on that corridor. And I think anyone who's ever driven that corridor, ridden that corridor knows there's some very dangerous crossing from Kingsley to the tunnel where you literally have to look behind you. The kids don't look. It's really a very dangerous. And the council has prioritized it. Everything stopped during the rail discussions. And it just seems like the longer this goes on, the greater the hazard is, especially with e-bikes, et cetera. So when I called about a year ago about this, I was told when the utilities were fixed, then this plan would go into action. But when I'm looking right now, it just says that it's completely stalled and stopped. So please put that on your radar. I'm assuming it's part of the bike plan. I hope it is. A neighbor and I did a bike count during the rail crossing issue. Everyone's very concerned about Churchill, as they should. The same number of bicycles cross Emerson from the corridor, from Bryant, that whole area, as do Churchill. And it just needs to be discussed that that is the case. If Churchill Crossing is closed, that that cloverleaf will become even more impacted. And so it's just really important that this whole network be looked at in terms of safety. It's so high trafficked by children of all ages. So thank you for for keeping that on your radar.
Yes. Hi, my name is Ken Horowitz, and I'd like someone to address youth suicide in Palo Alto. And I don't know, it's a very complex issue, but I think it's one that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Oh, I guess I won't do the tough question, right?
Yes. Well, let me, Dr. Horowitz, thank you for raising it. It's clearly an issue that is on many of our minds really constantly. In particular, recognizing the unfortunately, the the attractiveness of the Caltrain Corridor. And as you may know, the city has on an ongoing basis been involved with a monitoring system as a means of reducing the attractiveness. We also are involved with our Project Safety Net Collective that is both postvention term, if you're not familiar with it. Fortunately, after tragic incidents occur, that connects community organizations in order to do outreach to teens and to provide support through existing networks. There's also a discussion of bringing on an organization called the JED Foundation to take a look at the city's ongoing postvention as well as prevention efforts, both independently as well as with other organizations, including the Palo Alto Unified School District. So it's one that we haven't certainly solved, but is a topic of ongoing work. There's also Caltrain itself that has piloted a new system at Churchill as well as further up on the peninsula. And we are in discussions with them on how to enhance their methods of making it more difficult for people to access the tracks. As many know, and again, unfortunately, a years-long effort to do what we call great separations in order to physically separate the streets and from the rail corridor and make it much more difficult for individuals to get access to the train tracks. That is ongoing, and there is progress being made. But we are also years still years away from construction on many of those sites. So it is certainly top of mind for all of us. But that gives you a status.
Public Works Director Eggleston mentioned the amount of money, you know, being spent to clean sidewalks and streets downtown. However, since 1954, property owners or tenant or occupant of a building of a property is required to keep the streets, the sidewalks clean, and is prohibited from sweeping any debris into the street. So rather than take money out of a budget that could be used for other things, the the property owner should be responsible. And if only one property owner keeps their sidewalk clean, it's still a dirty street. So I suggest an assessment district paid for by the property owners to pay for all the things that Public Works Director mentioned. However, now we have parklets. And so essentially, they're in the streets and anything debris that they create, they should be, the properties that have those parklets should be responsible. So a second assessment district for those properties that have parklets would be responsible for for the street scape. And that's separate from the one for the park, for the sidewalks. And honestly, why that's not not possible. On one other issue on housing for city employees, people talking about converting office buildings to housing. Well, maybe this is an office building, I can set an example for those employees who don't have the option of telecommuting or of working from another office, who have to be here every day providing their operations and services for direct citizen contact. And the city already has office buildings elsewhere for those who are doing the kind of work they can either do in an office or from someplace else. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Herb. Just to comment briefly, it has been a longstanding practice in in the city of taking on that maintenance of the sidewalks. A lot of that work is actually funded not through the city's general fund, but through parking permit proceeds in the downtown areas. You make a good point that there's a lot of concern about parklets and cleanliness. There was a lively debate amongst the city council when adopting the the ongoing parklet program and the structure of that, as to whether to to charge cleaning fees to the parklet owners, or whether we would just be very explicit about expectations and requirements for cleaning that they would do. And city council ultimately settled on the latter, which is how we've been proceeding.
Other questions?
I'm very encouraged by why I just recently read about some sort of committee attempting or advisory board attempting to fix up the train station, Caltrans. And, you know, with the projects that seem to be ongoing, you know, MacArthur's Park just closed for renovation, and Stanford being able to have the transit turn going on El Camino Real. One of the things, like the gentleman right here was talking about, you know, attracting people down to Palo Alto. It's, you know, we have that empty train station. I know they're working on it. But it would just be, you know, that entrance is our gateway to Palo Alto. And I think that there should be, I'm not sure if you have a timeline on it or not. But it'd be interesting if we could, and I'm encouraged by what you said about the about the lights and the tunnels and relighting.
I'm probably the best one to talk on this. So I'm on the VTA Board and the Caltrain Board. And I got VTA to initiate an ad hoc committee of the board on the University Avenue Train Station. We've been meeting the last nine months or so. We have a upcoming meeting in just, I think, September 2, we'll be in the community meeting room. And we have short-term, medium, and long-term plans going on. The near term includes things like what Brad already talked about on tunneling, about $350,000 to do all the tenant improvements in the in the main station building to get it completely ready and modernized for both bathrooms and and a cafe reopening, and potentially some other uses in there. Other improvements to the surrounding area, we we already have temporary bathrooms that Caltrain put in on the east side, just in the recent months. And so there's a whole series of measures that we're doing there. And then in October, we're going to have what's called the Urban Land Institute, that's going to do a week-long facilitated kind of shretts that will be on to really help design the future of the station area and long-term buildouts. One of the problems is for 30 years, over 30 years, we've had, I think, five different visionary plans for the future of the station. And there was never any any connection between the vision-making and what could be funded and done. And so what we're focused on is a long-term plan that we can actually achieve, rather than something that we're going to put on paper and let it gather dust. So all that's happening right now.
Good summary. I think we can take one or two more.
Hi, my name is Chris Cowell. I'm a resident of East Palo Alto. I spent a lot of time in Palo Alto. I just came from dinner, saw the signs. And I wanted to call out concerns about the traffic that, as I think most people are aware, is really bad on university, especially in the evenings. I've I've read the docs going back 10 years. Think back in 2016, it used to take 76 minutes to get on university from Middlefield to like the 84, to the Dunbar Bridge, which I think is ridiculous for anyone driving there, mostly mostly cut through, but also a lot of Palo Alto residents. And I I am very worried about, especially with the Newell Bridge being constructed soon. I'm worried about additional impacts it's going to have for residents of Palo Alto and just anyone trying to get to the 101. I've been looking at some studies. I happen to serve on our planning commission and used to be on our Public Works and Transportation Commission. And did you know that about 80% of cars that take the Newell Bridge and go on Woodland to the 101 are just cut-through traffic for East Palo Alto? What this means is that when that bridge starts construction, all of those cars that used to use that as another way to get out of Palo Alto and into to the 101 and beyond are all going to be kind of queuing up even more for university northbound in the evenings and probably also fighting for Embarcadero. And I I'm really worried about what it's going to become from a traffic and safety standpoint. So I don't have a clear solution, but I just wanted to raise awareness about that. One last thing I'll say on that topic is I've met with a lot of Palo Alto residents, some in the Creston Park neighborhoods, some in like North University. A lot of people have expressed excitement about the new megamar that's opening in East Palo Alto. A lot of people have told me they already walked there, and they want to drive there. And I worry that's going to suck for a lot of people when the university traffic potentially backs up even more. Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone, for your questions. And thank you to our wonderful staff members for both the commentary and for answering those questions. So now we're going to move on to closing remarks by our council member, George Lu. Thank you. Can you hear me? Congratulations to making to the end, stuck around. You know, that's pretty good. You know, you're in the top 60 percentile, probably, people who've stuck around. I genuinely genuinely appreciate your enthusiasm for the community, your coming here, you're asking questions. And of course, I deeply appreciate the staff that have taken time out of their evenings to do this sort of extra part of their job to contribute to the community. I did take a note, take some notes on to-dos and asks for everyone here. So first of all, several of us here have office hours. So the people, the city council has office hours, Ria has office hours. I know there were a lot of hands on traffic, and so more opportunities to engage with that. On traffic, you can fill in on paloalto.gov on the police department page, a form for traffic enforcement. You can also report some traffic issues on 311. There will be a meeting on great separations on Churchill in October. There'll be chances to get feedback on the downtown housing plan and plans for Johnson Park. And oh, also on preparedness, there are, there is a block preparedness coordinator program in Palo Alto. So you can learn how to sort of step up and make your community more fire and earthquake and flood safe. So those were my quick shout outs. But I know there are more things to come. So I won't take more of your time. Thank you, everyone, again.
Great. So thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate, we all appreciate everyone coming, taking time out of a busy day and the evening to come here, as well as the staff and and council members. Next steps would be, as you're leaving, if you want to sign up for our email blast, we do it by the neighborhood. But I think right now, if you just go sign up on the sheets out in the lobby with your email and your name, your full name, we will get you in the system. And if you have any questions, you know, you can contact any of us. Thank you again. Have a good night.